Hello, everybody. Welcome to Coffee Talk for what is it? Monday, it's not Monday anymore. It is Thursday, April twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Before we start, I just want to note that this meeting is being recorded. And so if you say things or get promoted, your voice and your image will be recorded. Because this recording will be available, I believe, on the YouTube channel and a few other places where we post things, including the Cable Access. I'll lay out sort of a little bit how tonight is going to work before we jump into it. After a couple of quick announcements, the plan is just to talk a little bit about the process of town meeting and how town meeting works and what sort of expect on the first. We'll then talk about the budget for a little bit and have a presentation about some of the biggest things that are in the budget and answer questions on that. And then we will go through the warrant articles with some presentation on them. Probably spend a little bit more time on those that we think are a little bit more out of the ordinary or a little bit bigger numbers or more more question than not more questionable, but but you know, more impactful. And so and we have people in the audience who I already see who have been tapped to help us out. And so if at any point you have questions, just raise your hand. We'll pause every now and then, and I'll acknowledge those people who have questions or comments. Again, our goal tonight is not necessarily to come to an agreement about which one of these should pass and not pass is just to answer some basic questions. And so do you have a sense of what you'll be voting on when you show up on the first of May? That said, I want to start off tonight just with and 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 the other select board can chime in here too, but just an incredible sense of appreciation and thanks to our our first responders who have done some incredible service over the last week with historic events that were sort of back to back to back. And with the professionalism, the coordination they had with other towns. The amount of towns that came into here to help us out just shows sort of how much of a team player Berlin is seen in a lot of places. And and I am incredibly grateful to have the first responders that we have working for us in this town. I don't know if Chris or Peg, you want to add anything more to that?
Chris.
Go ahead, Chris.
I would completely agree. We've got a great team of fire and EMS and police in the police department also. And also, I think all of our hearts go out to the Christensen family also. And it it's going to be hard for a lot of people to move on. But hopefully, we can give support to them when they need it.
Tracy and I had the opportunity to go by the fire station on Sunday and drop off food to the staff that was there as a way of just saying thanks and to be able to talk to several firefighters and Chief Shartner was down there as well and to personally express our gratitude, especially well, since Mount Piska is just a little near and dear to my house. So, you know, very grateful for their swift action and I had a very valuable geography lesson over the weekend, too, as I sat here and watched trucks come from towns that I had no idea where I had to Google and find out where they were coming from. So towns, Broughton, Dunstable, Dayton, and everywhere in between. So thank you to those departments too for coming out to help our town. Appreciate it.
I think we had Fire Crews as far from the Cape actually come here to help out.
Dayton was the farthest one that I saw. And then there was the big white command truck that went up the road and then you know, throughout Friday and a little bit into Saturday was the helicopters, the state police helicopters who were dropping water as well. So truly, thank you. Thank you for everything that you've you've done.
And Chris, isn't Victoria doing some outreach on this?
She is. So she's been doing outreach to folks that she knows that are close and she's been taking referrals. So anyone who thinks someone could benefit from just chatting with Victoria, you're welcome to refer them over to her, give them her number. I can give it now. Actually, that's helpful. It is nine seven eight three one oh five nine one four. So we can certainly connect you up with some resources through Victoria. She's been doing a great job and just kind of checking in on folks and making sure people are doing all right. And I also just wanted to echo what everyone else has said. I have unfortunately been through some difficult events in my tenure with towns and the professionalism and commitment shown by all of our first responders is remarkable. I have to say the leadership of the two chiefs, I'm proud to, you know, be part of this town and I could not have had the situations in better hands. So just a thank you coming from me as well. You made, you know, my my job easy by your efforts and professionalism. So and thank you to you and all of your team.
And just shout out to the private residents too, who discarded cause for their own life and went in to save Jill. So they know who they are. I'm not going to publicly list them out. They'd probably, you know, hunt me down after this. So thank you. Thank you to those folks who did what they could. Appreciate it.
And for for those of those of our audience members and others who watch this later, maybe you want to just say who who Victoria is?
Oh, yes. Victoria is our Council on Aging and Social Services Director. She is a licensed social worker. And she is great just to chat with. She can refer you to resources or just, you know, pick up the phone if you're feeling a little lonely and you want to give somebody a call. She's just a very compassionate, kind and understanding person.
I don't see sort of Barry in the audience. I think
Plus he's on the phone.
Yeah, the for talent for so.
Oh, I was gonna say, I just tried to, I put one of the phones through. I don't know if that's the best way to do that.
No. We could just so town meeting is Monday, the first of May. It starts at seven thirty. Check in will start at what seven o'clock or so. I always encourage people to bring cushions because those chairs can get hard after a while. But but that's an unofficial thing. The the meeting is open to all residents. You if you're a non voter or if you're out of town, there'll be a special section in the back. But any resident can come and any resident can speak on sort of any topic. It is a matter of just coming forward and being recognized by the moderator who is Barry, who's been doing it for ever. And in some respects, it will go, it will follow the agenda of the warrant, which will just start with item number one, and we'll work our way through. I think item twenty-seven is is the end. We have, although the warrant talks about various voting methods through COVID funds, we're actually able to buy electronic voting clickers, which actually I think has made the meetings go much faster the last couple of years. Because what will happen is after the discussion seems to be done or the presentations, the moderator will say something like, you know, does everyone have their clicker? We'll all get ready to vote and he'll say, I open the voting now, a little number on the screen will count out the number of people who have voted. We all like watching that. And at a certain point, it just sort of levels off. Everyone is planning to vote is voted. The moderator will announce that the voting is closed and then poof, the results will show up on the screen. And either the motion will have passed or not. And then we just move on to the next one. It seems to be a pretty smooth thing. You don't have to be a resident for six generations again to be able to ask a question. We do these sort of coffee talks so that it's something that's a little bit less intimidating to ask a question in a in a either in this Zoom meeting that it would be necessarily in the floor of town meeting. And sometimes it's more procedural or other questions that is sort of easier to ask. Also, just pointing out things now gives a chance for more people in town to talk about stuff before, you know, we get on the floor of town meeting as well. I, you know, knock on some wood somewhere here. Think with twenty-seven records, we probably will be able to get through most of all of it in one night. But the rules are that at eleven o'clock at night, if we're not done, the meeting has to stop and take a vote about whether or not we want to continue on past eleven o'clock or continue on to Tuesday with anything that is left undone. I'm kind of, I don't know if there's you, I'm kind of hoping for a one night meeting myself. So are there sort of just any questions about the basic sort of structure or format of town meeting? And if not, we could bring, I think the Mary, the audience is Mary Porter, who can talk to us about the budget. So officially, I think the budget is item twelve on the agenda. But it is sort of the media. There will actually be a series of motions. They tend to do a motion for sort of each section. And some sections might even break even beyond that. But if you have your handy dandy warrant in front of you, the budgets are going to be in here, starting on what is the page?
Seven.
Yeah. So starting at page seven is the budget. And that because of just the fun way that pages got cut, we had to do a fun little blue insert for lines eighty-one through one thirteen.
And just a reminder, before we get going, the whole purpose of Coffee Talk is just to have, just to have that, is to have a chat. Scott and I and Chris won't be debating, voting, deliberating on anything. We're here to listen, take notes and basically just hear your your feedback. So it's kind of sort of a night off for us, but not really. So with that.
Thanks. I forgot that disclaimer, too.
No worries.
There are no vote. And again, as I said earlier, there's not even, there's not a need for this group to vote or agree on things. There's a chance to sort of ask questions and and clarify things you might have heard or not heard in town or are unclear in the warrant. You know, sometimes it has to be written a little bit legally. We try in it to list the motion and the purposes, but sometimes even that doesn't make sense to everybody. Anyway, Mary, are you there to try to take us to the budget?
I am Scott, and this is my first Coffee Talk because because it just is. And do I not have my video on? I don't know.
No, it doesn't look like your video is on.
Well, it's it's not giving me an option. Is it giving me an option to do that?
You should down in the well, we're left hand corner, Mary, there should be something that says.
I've got a raised hand thing. That's all I've got. I don't have, I don't seem to.
Or left, do you have anything called like stop video?
No, I've got to join as panelist. Maybe that'll.
Yeah, that'll give it to you.
There we go. You had to, you had to make me a panelist. Here we go.
I gave you permission to talk, but didn't make you a panelist. So apparently that was only partial access.
No problem. So this year's budget, where do we start? It's been, it's been a very interesting year. Maybe the top lines, you say we start, the budget starts at page seven in the warrant. If it's the page I'm looking at, it says Finance Committee Budget Summary for the Year Ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Is that the right page?
Yeah. And Chris, and I'm trying to find it online. So potentially, one of us could share the screen with it, but.
I have it if you'd like me to share since Mary's.
Yeah, if you're presenting and talking, Mary, I, Kristen can play some extra duty and.
Oh, yeah, there, there we go. Okay. So now we're literally on the same page now, everybody that's tuned in. I just wanted to point out, moving from fiscal twenty-three to twenty-four, the proposed budgets are going from fourteen million, seven hundred twenty-eight thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars to sixteen million, four hundred and one thousand and fifty dollars. And then you can below that, you can see the expenses, the total expenses, different categories. And our levy calculations prior year to this year. And various other sources of revenue coming in. So so from this we calculated, we we balanced a budget, if you will, in our proposal here. And I'm, I'm not going to, if people have questions, we'll come back to it, but but I I wanted to just get people focused on those numbers and then the details, line by line expenditures follow in the next few pages. And I don't know, Kristen, if we want to leave this up or or whatever, but but I I want to turn next and talk to our committee report, the Finance Committee Report, which is also in printed in the warrant that people got, and it should be in the online part. And this is the two pages before the budget summary we're looking at. Overall, our fiscal twenty-four budget increases spending by six point seven percent. Now, this excludes our capital expenditures. Six point seven percent over fiscal twenty-three. And in order to do this, in order to meet these expenses, these needs, we anticipate a property tax levy to our, the levy to increase four percent over fiscal twenty-three. And I I can speak well, I'll, I'll let people ask questions. I'm not going to speak to it. But it's been, this has been a hard budget to do post pandemic. There's, there's a lot of adjusting. The Berlin Boylston Regional School District circumstances coming up late in the budget cycle have required a lot of a lot of work on the on the behalf, by a lot of individuals, Nancy Kineski at the school district, Kristen Rubin, our town administrator, people on the finance committee. So, but let me pull out from our report the items that we listed as notice as notable in what we're recommending with this budget. First is a cost of living adjustment, a two and a half percent cost of living adjustment, along with merit step increases, market adjustments for positions in the town with the town employees. And in the regional school district, we started out asking for a two and a half percent increase. It's not where we landed. For the asset bet schools, we've got an increase in student population from Berlin of nineteen percent, which in which has increased our our assessment there in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand. I think I have that right. And overall, the asset operating budget has gone up seven point eight percent this year. The asset has increased students from Berlin and decreased students from outside of the towns that are part of the asset district. And so that shifts in Berlin does not get as much state aid as some of the other towns. We're considered to be a relatively wealthy town in the mix. So hence our increase and on the line. I want to get to that. I want to get to the actual number for asset assessment was, yeah, one hundred and twenty, roughly one hundred and twenty-four thousand, a twenty-one point three percent increase over last year. For the total budget amount that we're recommending for asset of seven hundred and five thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars. And going on to the the Berlin Boylston Regional School District. Many factors have driven up costs here, including notably ten point five percent increase in health insurance, special education. Many issues there in the special education aspect of expenses, there's been a fourteen percent increase in the tuition that the state is allowing out of district special education schools to to have fourteen percent for fiscal twenty-four over twenty-three. So many factors there, but there, these drivers are accounting for a nine point one percent increase in assessment at Berlin Memorial School and a eight point nine percent increase at the Toronto School. One of the things on the schools, I want to point out that Berlin was able to fully fund the capital requests. So we were able to fully fund capital requests both for Berlin Memorial and Toronto from free cash that the town, the certified free cash town has. And this free cash what our position in free free cash this year was generated in part by other town operations who have been underspending constraining their budgets over the last three COVID years, if you will. And for which we're all grateful on the finance committee, the people, the town departments have done this. So this is allowed very generous funding recommendations from Finance Committee on the Regional School District and the asset principally on the Regional School District.
May I add one thing? Or did you want to speak to the the deficit that we had?
No, I I think that that I want to stick with what's been printed here in the warrant.
Okay.
And maybe add that at the end.
Sure.
But I think just and just for people that are tuning in, I think it's important to realize that all of the capital requests are being funded by Berlin for both schools. You know, I've seen concerns, I've seen some fears about all schools are falling apart or this is happening. No, we're, we're able to because this, because the town is pretty fiscal, fiscally responsible, we are able to fund all of the capital requests this year that have come through. And they're listed here in the summary. It's the flat roof at at Berlin Memorial. Hundred and twenty thousand dollars for technology, photocopiers, plumbing, plumbing door, sidewalk repairs, these kinds of things. And for Toronto, technology costs, security system, copier, three D printers. So we've done well on the capital side of things. And generally with the school, those, the the town departments are pretty much been held at two and a half percent increases. And so the school figures of nine point one percent and eight point nine percent, those are recommendations are pushing our limits, but but they are recommendations that we have, that we we have made to the town. We, the Finance Committee. Public safety. The police have have had significant increases or have steady increases for services at River Bridge, the Rockwell Apartments, Highland Commons and so on. But we also have public safety mitigation funds that come in most noticeably from Highland Commons and and that have helped to fund some of our public safety costs. Other the ambulance receipts have covered part of the cost one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for a replacement ambulance. So let's see, other highlights. The town has has incurred a ten and a half percent increase in health insurance rates. So that's in, that's in the expenses that we're looking at here. A few other expenses that are up, legal expenses, fuel, oil, data systems. And we have we have voted to make contributions into the reserve fund and stabilization fund to do again, to to be fiscally responsible here. Let's see, what else have I? I guess in the summary of our report, our our recommended Berlin Boylston Regional School District assessment is increasing by nine percent approximately. It's still, it still falls short of the request by the school committee and I don't know, Kristen, if you want to talk about this. At the time this was printed, we were, we were proposing the four percent increase in taxes to and also to using two hundred thousand dollars in excess levy capacity. So to take us from the two and a half percent targeted increase to the four percent increase where we landed. So Kristen, on the, on the seven hundred thirty-two thousand dollar short or deficit between where the school committee landed and where the town recommendations ended. I'm going to let you, you were in the middle of that. Thank you. Yes, and I didn't have to be in the middle of it. So I want to let you speak to it, if you will.
Absolutely. And I apologize for jumping the gun on that one.
No, no, sorry.
I'm just scrolling down. So sorry, my screen is hard to see right here. So basically, given the fact that we had the gap, even with the four percent recommended tax increase, that seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar gap was needing to be met and we worked very hard and went back and forth and it was a challenge on both sides because the a lot of this is is what you like to call an unfunded mandate. A lot of these are mandated school spending expenses that, you know, the state needs to do a better job of funding and we have made this heard loud and clear to our state reps. And we anticipate there will be changes because we are not the only community that has felt this way and that has put this forward. But basically, we came forward with a solution where Berlin Boylston Regional School District is putting in some additional circuit breaker and school choice revenue, really kind of pushing the limit of their revenue estimates like we have done on our side. And in exchange, we agreed to do a one time infusion of three hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars in free cash to close this gap. It's not ideal really for anybody, to be honest. You know, we don't like to use free cash. The schools don't want to push the limits of their revenue projections. Obviously, conservative revenue projections on all sides are generally the best way to go because if you don't hit those revenues, then you have a problem. But our hope is that in FY twenty-five, circuit breaker funds come in in arrears. So the FY twenty-four funds will be coming in in twenty-five. Those amounts should be higher to cover the significant increases that we have seen. And we are hopeful the state will fulfill their promises of, you know, really stepping up and trying to fill this gap that cities and towns are facing. The reason for using free cash is because they are existing funds that we had on hand. Otherwise, to close that deficit would have resulted in increasing taxes even further beyond four percent. So is there a possibility that in FY twenty-five, we could have to increase taxes again because we could have a deficit on special education? Absolutely. It is unknown. But I think in this was a good compromise to get everybody on the same page and to be able to move forward with a unified recommendation from the school committee, the finance committee and the select board so that we didn't have to do something like a almost ten percent tax increase like we were talking about initially to try to meet that seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar deficit.
Yeah, that, that, thanks, Kristen. And and just on what's happened this year that the town of Berlin was able to do this with three hundred eighty-two thousand of free cash. This is a one time event as I see it. I don't think this is something that can be repeated and we're looking at expenses such as we have the flat roof for Berlin Memorial School this year, but we're looking at the rest of the roof where you're into a million dollar sort of capital expense. And so we it it's highly unlikely that what we were able to put together here can be repeated. And on the other, so that's kind of the the downside of this conversation, then the upside. There's a lot of activity across Massachusetts on the special education funding issues. And I am hopeful that they'll be resolved. And I just want to point out that the House has come back with a budget recommendation that is with respect to schools at or better than what the governor proposed. So it's good news. We still don't have, you know, look, full legislature is not there yet, but but I just want to point that out on this, this the printed summary that we're looking at on the screen from the Finance Committee that that towards the end of that page. When it was written, we hadn't been able to figure out a way to close that gap, but but that, this is not something that we can do again. It's very unlikely that this kind of thing could happen again. So we need to find other ways.
And and Mary, if I could, that one, the compromise that Kristen just talked about has been voted on and approved by FinCom, the Select Board and the School Board. And so all three of the sort of impacted committees have all given their, for the director, I think all three of us feel like you just said that none of us are happy with it. We think, you know, we shouldn't have been put in this place in the first place. We all agree it's one time, but it's also not only do we have the governor's budget, but you know, there was a new superintendent, a new finance director over the school, this new town administrator here in Berlin. It gives a year for all of them to, you know, learn their ropes and find other things, other ways of doing some of these stuff. And so you know, I don't think any of us like kicking cans down the road for a year. But when you can definitely see things are going to change in that year, that things have been down. It is, it is worth support.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott. I, I think, Scott, I don't, I don't know that I have anything else on that. I don't know how you want to handle questions. If you're going to the end of the session or what you're doing here.
I think if people have questions on the budget and spending to to raise your hands and we'll recognize you and you can ask your question, we can see we have to answer on it. Ask your question, we can see we have to answer on it. And we'll probably ask a couple more times, and so if you're still digesting numbers. You can raise your hands, because we'll, we'll ask throughout it for questions and, you know. When I ask, when we take our next sort of break for questions, you have a question about the budget, we'll, we'll pull that back up, so. But yes, thank you, Mary and FinCom for the work you folks have done. It was a, a tough budget year. You had several meetings that went past eleven o'clock. And as you point out, you know, your summary at the very last second, it had to go to press, still wasn't done. There was still work afterwards, and so. To town members, you know, even after this goes to press, we don't stop as volunteers trying to find solutions. To, to make things work, because we're all taxpayers too.
Exactly. And the good, good news is when people know we're going to go late with the meeting, somebody will show up with food or, or lollipops or something, right? So you get that, you get that sugar hit at ten o'clock at night.
And then someone gives me a three-foot pointer to point at the television and then it all goes sideways.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Mary. I don't see any hands up at the moment, so we'll move on to the, the next. Part where we will look at warrant articles. So if you're, you have your handy dandy warrant in front of you there. You just actually turn to what is the second page where we start with Article One, and Kristen, do you want to take it away?
I sure will. So Article One is a prior year expense. Anytime there is a bill or an expense from a previous fiscal year, it does have to be approved by town meeting. In this instance, this is a stipend that is in the police union contract. It's an armor stipend. And it is a thousand dollar stipend, inadvertently, half of it was paid out, not the full amount for two years. So we owe a thousand dollars to this officer and we would like to make him whole. So that is our only prior year expense that we have this year. The, these are all kind of relative housekeeping ones, so I'll go through these a little bit quickly, and then if we have any questions, we can pause. Article sunset clause removals. A lot of the articles that I, I've noticed that we have, have. Sunset clauses on them, meaning the funds have to be extended, expended, excuse me, by a certain date. That's actually not a requirement. You don't have to have sunset clauses on articles. Because now, under municipal modernization, the accountant can actually close those accounts out. Once the project has been completed. And those funds can only be spent on what they've been voted for at town meeting. So there are a number of projects that haven't been completely finished due to change in administration, et cetera. So we're basically just going to remove those clauses so we can complete those projects and our hope is to get them done within the next fiscal year. But just in case with supply chain issues and everything else going on, we don't want to put another end date on them. And have to come back again. So those include the town office air handler roof replacement and. Sorry, my screen is cutting off at the bottom. The ambulance replacement. The old fire station roof, the recreation court upgrades and the cemetery paving. Article three is to replenish the reserve fund. This year, we have had a number of unforeseen expenses and unfortunately, the ninety five thousand dollar reserve fund. Is down to just over twenty thousand dollars. And I have a couple of expenses that have come in since the printing of this article. So the idea is to replenish it with fifty thousand dollars in free cash, should that not be used. It will be closed out to the general fund, but ultimately flow back to free cash and have to be re-appropriated, so. It won't be spent if it can't be, it, it won't be spent if it's not ultimately has to. And that money is at the, under the control of the finance committee. And departments have to go forward and make their case for using those funds. Additional funding for the ambulance replacement. I do have, if anyone has specific questions on this article, I know our new fire chief is here this evening. But I'll just go over this very quickly for you at this time. Cost increases and changes in regulations in terms of what need to be on vehicles. Are driving this increase in cost. That includes a new requirement to include a power lift stretcher on all new vehicles. An increase in the cost of the chassis and an inclusion of the radio system. So that is driving an additional hundred and fourteen thousand dollars unfortunately to the already approved three hundred and fifteen thousand. For the ambulance. This would come out of the ambulance. Receipts reserved for appropriation. Fund that is receipts collected for ambulance services. I believe June Miller is actually here. I'll, I'll bring her forward if she wants to speak to the Bullard House Historic Preservation Restriction.
There you are, June. Hi. Hi, everybody. I sent along early this, yesterday morning, I guess, a proposed amended motion. There was some concern at the, at our historical commission meeting last Friday. That not only did we not want to encumber the curatorial building and a little. Bit of the town hall elevator addition, which actually are part of the Bullard House parcel. And so the amended motion would also. Not encumber the land that, that those structures sit on. I don't know if you want me to read that amended motion or.
June, why don't you just start with sort of the reason we're doing this in the first place?
Oh, sure. We're complying with the requirement to. Apply for that MHC MPF matching grant for the Bullard House. We expect from what we see that. The average amount of money that could be matched is fifty thousand dollars. The preservation restriction has to be imposed in order to apply for that grant.
And I, I think that was the only article for the historical commission, June, is that correct?
That's right.
Yep.
Okay, well.
And so you're expecting on the floor to sort of do a quick amendment to clarify that this is really just for the House so that. If for some reason we decided to do some landscaping, we don't have to potentially go to the state to get approval for it, right?
That's right.
And it's one of those things, there are, this would put some restrictions on what we can do with the Bullard House. And so we'll do this, get sort of approval at town meeting to do it, but we might not actually file it. Unless we actually get the grant, because there's no reason to put extra restrictions on the Bullard House unless. We actually get some added money to help with the renovations.
Right, and if, if the award is too small to. Justify all the. The work that needs to happen in order to comply with all the requirements. Then we don't have to accept a small amount either.
And I know historical have been meeting a lot lately and also had their set of long meetings. In like a minute or two, you want to just give an update of sort of what historical commission is up to, especially with the Bullard House?
Sure. We've been waiting patiently for an instrument survey to be. Not an instrument survey, but a site survey to be updated from that time when the elevator addition was being planned. And, and completed. And I, I think we're, we're going to see that happen within the next week. Because Paul Wheeler actually exposed the septic system. So that we can have a Title V inspection and that, that little part. That's a little part of the project that needs to happen in order for the site survey to be updated. We really need that topographical information in order to address the drainage issues. And the foundation. So hopefully that will, they will do that site survey within the next week. I can't imagine that they would want to leave those holes, even though they're covered over with boards. I don't think they would want to leave them exposed for very long. The other thing that's happened recently is that the engineering report that we had for the foundation. Actually, the engineer came back to visit with two contractors. And they're offering a series of options to rehabilitate the foundation and some are. The, well, I don't know if you'd want to call it, call it the gold standard, but one is to, is to raise the building. And then. Actually produce a new foundation. And we, in our discussions, we, with our architect and among ourselves, we don't favor that option. We favor a less drastic option, which is to. Have, well, some, some people refer to it as shotcrete. That would be to reinforce the inside of the foundation with concrete. And then so that the, the fieldstone foundation on the exterior would be. Would be. Prepared, but it, but the appearance of it would be very similar. So we're trying to do these structural things, these nuts and bolts things, but it's been very, to me, it seems very slow. We're, we're working hard, even though it's slow, we're working hard to make it happen.
Thank you. People have any questions about historical or, or this warrant article? Again, anytime you can raise your hands and when, when we get to pauses, I can call, call on you as well. Then, thank, thank you, June, for both the presentation there and an update on where they're at with the Bullard House.
Thank you, June. Just a heads up, I've learned that to remove you from the panel kicks you out of the meeting altogether. So you'll have to come back in, I apologize. There may be a different way, but I can't find it.
That's okay.
All right, so I'm not, I'm not trying to tell you to leave permanently.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bye bye.
I kicked Mary Porter out completely, so I just thought I'd give a, I'd give a caveat. She didn't know if I was trying to send her a message, or I was. All right.
Do you want to pick up on six and seven then?
Absolutely. Solar pilot agreements, so these are tax agreements basically for solar. Field solar arrays and energy systems can be wind powered or solar. This article gives the select board, the board of assessors and the town administrator to negotiate and execute. These agreements on behalf of the town to bring in revenue. So that's always a good thing. And Article Seven actually gives permission to proceed with one specific solar pilot project. Which is on the highway roof, which I know people have been talking about for quite some time. So we're very excited about this. We have received approval for rebates through the state's energy program. We are working with a company called Select. And this would give us permission to enter into all of the necessary agreements. And any easements, et cetera, that need to be undertaken in order to complete this project. All right, let's see. Article eight, I know we need to have a little bit of discussion about this one amongst the board. So this is one we'll be discussing, but the, the way that this one is. Written is to authorize the select board to execute, exercise, excuse me, its option to purchase a parcel of land. At River Run, known as Lot Six B, as allowed for in the River Bridge Development Agreement. This is a parcel of land down, if you know, kind of over where Boundless Adventures is. That we are allowed to purchase for a dollar pursuant to that development agreement. This article would allow the town to exercise that option and allow the select board to. Look for development opportunities, so they would have the authority to lease, sell or otherwise develop the property. Establish an opioid settlement stabilization account. We are participants to a number of these large state and nationwide opioid lawsuits. Against some of the major pharmaceutical companies. To date, we've received seventeen thousand, five hundred and eighty seven dollars and sixty seven cents in funds. This would allow us to set up a stabilization fund to put that money in. And to dedicate without further appropriation all funds received moving forward. Those funds need to be used for specific purposes relative to opioid education, prevention. And services. So we'll be collecting those funds and working on establishing a program likely through our social services director. And with that, we have our first community preservation article, so I can bring forward, I believe Wayne. Is here with us this evening. If that works for you, Scott, I will bring him forward. And I think we'll have Wayne talk about all the articles.
Yeah, I guess I'd have him hit these two and then we'll jump to the other. Other articles for CPA and then we'll go back in order after that.
Perfect.
This is. Ten, eleven and thirteen.
Hi there. Thank you for doing it in a little out of order from the. Since I'll say, well, since he'll get booted out after this.
Yeah, apparently June didn't come back, so now I feel like I personally offended her somehow, so.
Not making any promises, but we'll see. So as a representative of the Community Preservation Act Committee. So Article eleven, you had three, you had three projects, which the different articles are about. Article eleven is for a proposal, a request. Proposal to put a fence around the community garden on River Road West. On the River Bridge property, this is a, a proposal that had come up previously. And we weren't able to fund it last year. And so, but we thought it was a good project, so unfortunately the costs have gone up because nothing goes down these days. So that's, so the funding request for there is forty five thousand. I think it's perhaps a little bit on the higher side. But because the amounts can't be increased after the fact without another whole vote and stuff like that, if the funds aren't fully. Utilized, then obviously they would come back to CP, CPA, but that, that was based on that proposal, so. At town meeting, the proponent of it will actually speak to it and give some more information, but basically it's to put a fence. Around that, it's all the professional services required to do so and the equipment, et cetera. So that's what that one is. Any questions on that?
Don't see any hands.
Wayne, we, we did jump over Article ten quickly, which is really simple. It's just appropriating your remaining funds that came in in FY twenty two.
Okay.
So I just wanted to point that one out. Basically, those are your funds that came in, they have to be, they're unallocated. So they have to be put in their proper reserve accounts.
Oh, right, so yeah, and that's an area I'm new to the committee, so, but, but basically. Ten percent of the amount, I believe it is, has to be put under, because CPA operates under three different areas. One is open space, and I should have said the fence project is an open space project. The, the historic reserve and then community housing, so. So a portion is required to be put into each of those buckets and then the rest goes into the general funds, so for CPA, so. Thank you for reminding me to talk about that.
Yeah, no problem.
The next one is twenty one?
Twenty, thirteen is the capital improvement plan.
Oh, yeah, but I think all of your articles under the capital improvement plan also have their own sub articles too. So I think you can jump to twenty.
Twenty, so that particular one. Is for the budget. I mean, there's a, there's a percentage that were, that's put aside for administrative expenses for the community. The rest is the reserve, which comes from the levy, the three percent, which is then what the state. Will eventually hopefully match against that amount. That's why the town had approved three percent when it put the Community Preservation Act. Into, into effect. uh, into, into effect. And so you can see the, um, under this, under this, uh, article. Again, the ten, the ten percents going of, of those amounts each going into, uh, the various funds. So I think that hopefully that's a good enough explanation. Chris, you've got a better explanation, uh, by all means. So then Article twenty-one, this is a land acquisition. Um, this is a a project that, uh, we discussed a lot on the committee. Um, there's an op, there's an opportunity, uh, for the town to purchase, uh, land, a portion of the land at seventy, of seventy-two Carter Street. Um, the, the, um, owners have given the town the right of refusal, uh, before they put this property on the market. It definitely will go on the market. And so there was a lot of discussion about whether or not we bought the entire parcel, uh, which is eight point five acres. Um, and then create, try to create an affordable housing unit. Um, and so we went back and forth and you know, the, we looked at options. For, uh, being able to develop that piece of property, um, and, and what would be involved. We don't have our, um, our housing trust. I hope that's the right term that's been put in place currently. So there's really not the resources to be able to do that. We, we looked at other resources regionally that could help us do something like that. Um, it's just because it's the one via one unit, um, parcel. It just, there seemed to be just continual issues with trying to find something to make that make sense at the amount we would spend. So we, we approached the, uh, property owners and instead of purchasing the entire, um, parcel, we, uh, have, are proposing purchasing, um, the six point five acres. So would we would be purchasing the extra, uh, acreage off the property, um, which would then have a conservation restriction put on it. And then it would allow the, the property owners to have a, a two acre, uh, lot that they could then sell separately. So we felt that, uh, based on past history of looking at these types of projects, that it made sense. It's a cleaner, um, opportunity. It's, it would allow the town to purchase and preserve um, a key parcel right in the center of town, um, in, in that triangle between West Street and Carter Streets and, and, uh, watered out. And it just gives the town, um, a lot of protection, uh, versus having, you know, somebody else come in, buy that parcel of land and, you know, split it into housing lots and strip the land and things like that. And, you know, you, nobody has a crystal ball, but we've seen those types of things happen way too many times around town. And because of the key location of this parcel, we feel it's a huge opportunity that the family wanted to give this to the town, uh, give the town the opportunity to do this. So, um, the purchase amount would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand is what we're asking for, um, to be appropriated. So hopefully that's clear enough on that. Maybe it's more than people expected, but I think it's, um, anytime you purchase a piece of property like this, it's, it's, it's one that raises questions and why and, uh, things like that. We did look at amounts for, you know, what housing lots sell for and things like that. So that's, you know, how we came up with the pricing. So all right. And then the last one is, um, Article twenty-two, which is, um, a project put, oh, and so I should say that that, that last one was under open space. And this, uh, other one is open space again, but slash recreation, uh, Article twenty-two, which is to build a pavilion, um, on the South Common, uh, in the area sort of between the ten, near where the tennis courts are and the pond. Um, and so recreation has come up with that. They've gone out to bid, um, looked at a few different options. In all honesty, the, I, you know, working with the committee, they, we would say that they've improved the aesthetic value of uh, what this, what this proposal would be like because, um, again, because it is, you know, community, the Community Investment Act had created a, uh, a project or an opportunity that would, you know, give people for recreation leads to, to have this pavilion where they could go to have, you know, outings or things like that. Um, and so that the proponent, uh, will have, you know, designs of, of the pavilion. So it's basically a, you know, long pavilions look like, I guess, with posts and a roof. Um, but they'll also, you know, do it in a way that, um, will be aesthetically pleasing. So it's not a completely stripped down version of the most basic, but something that's aesthetically pleasing. Um, and that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So basically, you know, we worked really hard to try to figure out the, the, the funding and what was available. And we're really glad that the three proposals that came and were put forth were up, will be able to recommend all of them, um, to the town this year.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome there.
So I, I think we can, go ahead. Thank you for that. I wait.
Thanks very much. Good to see you all.
Yeah, the Community Preservation Act is another group of volunteers that work hard to make sure the, the money we get from a variety of sources, uh, is well spent and well used in this town.
Absolutely.
Um, and then speaking of committees that spend their time figuring out to make sure money is well used and well spent, uh, the capital and, the capital planning committee, uh, which figures out sort of the, the big one-time expenses where the finance committee works on the sort of budget stuff. And do we have someone here from capital planning?
I am trying to see. I actually don't believe that we do. However, I'm comfortable going, walking us through it if that works for you. One thing I should mention too is as we leave, um, Article eleven, which is that's the CPA. The, that is the fiscal year twenty-three portion of the warrant. Um, so those first eleven articles, uh, take effect this fiscal year. Um, once we get to Article twelve, which is the FY twenty-four operating budget, that starts obviously the next fiscal year, um, part of the warrant. So Article thirteen, the FY twenty-four capital plan. Um, as Mary Porter mentioned, we did have some, some, some unusual amount of free cash. And this had to do with very conservative budgeting and our department's really hunkering down and conservatively spending during COVID. Um, and, you know, they did an amazing job at conserving resources. And so we're able to take some of those one-time funds and put them back into different capital projects for the town and for the schools. So what the capital committee has come up with is a capital plan that asks for nine hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars from free cash and eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the public safety stabilization account. To fund these, uh, thirteen articles that you see here. They break down a bit for the schools and I can give you that in a minute, but basically you've got the schools at four sixty-eight, four-ten for Berlin Memorial, Tejano at two eleven, five ninety-nine. You have a retaining wall at the transfer station for twenty-five thousand, a mower. The, um, for ten thousand five. And actually, you know what? Let me just share my screens. I don't have to read this to everybody because most of you probably have this in front of you anyways. But if you don't, then you don't have to listen to me drone on and on and read this to you. Uh, let's see. Let me make this a little bit bigger. So basically, um, replacing a mower for highway, doing some town office facade repairs and painting, town flooring replacement, uh, six units of AED defibrillators for fire EMS. Five sets of PPE, PPE or personal protective equipment for fire EMS. A new fire pumper engine that is the eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars requested out of public safety stabilization funding. Uh, for police, a cup, two tri-band radio replace, replacements, two replacement MDTs or mobile data terminals and replacing the twenty sixteen chief's vehicle. And last but not least, a server replacement for cable access. Um, if you want to know a little bit more about the schools, there is a further breakdown here. Uh, Berlin Memorial's funding would go towards the replacement of the flat portion of the roof. Um, IT switches routers, Chromebooks, copiers, some plumbing repairs, exterior door replacements, a facilities truck and repaving the walkway and playground. And then Berlin's portion of Tejano would go to IT support, switches routers and Chromebooks again. Security cameras and a security camera slash systems, a facilities assessment, copiers, three D printers, an HVAC upgrade and, uh, Tejano's portion of the facilities vehicle. Uh, I should note the facilities vehicle is actually coming from the town. Uh, we have a vehicle over in Police Department that the police, uh, chief has generously said that he will sell to the schools for its assessed value of thirteen thousand dollars. So that is a savings on, on both sides for us. Um, I do have, um, our public safety officials here. If anyone has specific questions on their articles on the capital plan.
Kristen, I might want to, might want to point out, the, the pumper truck was actually on the capital plan for next year. We're pushing it forward uh, to get it sooner. Um, uh, the reason for that?
Yeah, you know what? Um, let me actually bring our new fire chief forward and let him speak to that. Going to put, put our new chief McCullin on the hot spot for a moment there. It's the purpose for a cost is for cost savings, but I will let him speak to it. Good evening, chief.
Good evening. Of course, it looks like I'm sitting in the dark here. There we go. That's a little better.
Oh, we can see you now.
Yes, that's perfect. Yes. So, um, one of the things that happened was when I came in and started looking at the fire apparatus, there's some new requirements coming out in twenty twenty-seven for emission standards, um, that if, or motors that are being built for the larger vehicles. Um, and they were looking and going into effect for, uh, building, if you will. Anyone, well, we were ordering trucks around, if you will, for that timeframe there about, we're about thirty months behind on fire trucks delivery due to the shortage of, uh, supply chain. Um, so ordering now, we'd be looking thirty months ahead of time. If we wait another year, it puts us into that timeframe for those emission standards, if you will, that are going to change. They're going to increase the cost of the truck by almost, uh, twenty percent. And a lot of the manufacturers have moved their motors up. Now they're being built earlier than the twenty twenty-seven deadline. They're actually starting them January of twenty twenty-six. Um, so during the discussion of the increase for the apparatus and stuff, and as the manufacturers try to figure out how to integrate these new motors into their, um, chassis and cabs, the increase in the price continues to go up and it's kind of unstable as to how they're going to do that. So that's why, um, I brought that forward to the capital committee just to inform them to let them know that that was a number we'd be looking at. The next year potentially it's going to go higher. And we talked about using the money that we had currently in, uh, the, uh, the public safety mitigation fund. Since we had it to go ahead and purchase it now, since we won't receive the truck most likely for twenty to twenty-five months, um, at the earliest.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks. I think that's what we were looking for. Just to understand and, uh, again, that this is being paid out of, uh, public safety mitigation. So it actually isn't even free cash that there's, uh, paying for the purchase of this truck.
And I'm, I'm happy if anybody in the audience has further questions on that, that didn't understand what I said, because clearly I understand it, but I may not explain it well enough. Um, I'm happy to explain it a little bit better if somebody needs a better explanation.
And for those of you, you probably know, but public safety mitigation funds come from development agreements for some of our larger projects, including Highland Commons, Solomon Pond Mall and River Bridge. Okay.
Thank you, chief.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
All right. Now I'm going to give you the boot, so I apologize.
All right, here we go.
And you're gone. Okay.
It's peg spending time.
Right. Um, I do have, uh, I noticed that Chief Shartner is here. If anyone has questions on the PD side of the capital plan, um, I think there, there's a relatively straightforward. But if anybody does, um, I can bring him forward.
Not, not seeing hands. People aren't very ducking it tonight.
That's okay. You're all welcome to speak. It's hard to listening to my own voice. Um, okay. So, uh, if there are no other questions on the capital plan, then I guess we will continue on. Okay, Article fourteen, this is a standard article every year, setting your spending for cable access. That's your local cable folks. Um, that is setting a budget of seventy-eight thousand six hundred and forty, um, from the Public Educational and Governmental Access Grant. We were talking about that earlier, trying to remember what PEG stood for besides PEG. Um, so those funds actually come off of a, I believe it's a charge on our cable bills. Um, and then it comes back to the community. So not all of your charges and fees on your cable bill disappear. Some of them come back, um, and fund local cable. So that is Article fourteen. Article fifteen and sixteen are kind of housekeeping items. Um, we're amending our revolving fund bylaw to include a revolving fund for the new bucket truck that the town has. And, um, allowing us basically to take in fees. It's a regional bucket truck. So if other towns use it, they pay us a fee. We use those fees to pay for expenses such as gas, repairs, et cetera. And we have to set an annual spending limit for each of our revolving funds. And this one, we recommended setting at twenty thousand dollars. Article sixteen sets the annual limits for our other revolving funds, which are library video fines, recreation, town hall, plumbing and gas inspector wages, electrical inspector wages, and now the new bucket truck. So those amounts are all the same with the exception of the new bucket truck add-in. Uh, let's see. Article seventeen is appropriation of insurance restitution funds. This is basically another housekeeping requirement. There was a restitution settlement uh, through the Boston Business Services payroll fraud case. And we did receive some restitution funds. We are required to pay those back to our insurance company, Maya or the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Agency. So it is an amount of just over seven thousand dollars that we received in restitution, which must go back because insurance paid the initial claim out. Um, all right. I don't know if we have anyone from the Board of Assessors that may like to speak to Articles eighteen and nineteen. Kevin, would you like to speak to them? I see Kevin in the audience.
Might be Claire as well.
Oh, could be Claire. That's true. I apologize. Um, well, if you want to speak, raise your hand. Otherwise I can just go over them very quickly. Um, these are basically just statutory requirements. We're asking, I'm sorry, statutes of mass general law. We are asking the town to accept, um, for asset limits. So, uh, it would basically be setting asset limits, um, by a fixed calculation that is explained here. Um, and by, it's a local option that we can adopt and it would increase the, and increase that limit by a cost of living adjustment based on the consumer price index. Every year essentially. So that is accepting MGL, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause seventeen E. And then there's also MGL, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause forty-one D, which addresses income and asset limits. So this is another local option that if we accept this provision of mass general law, asset limits would increase by cost of living and adjustments set by the consumer price index as well. All right. Um, we did Article twenty, which was our CPA and twenty-one and twenty-two. Um, Article twenty-three, uh, we like to take a percentage of our free cash and put it into general stabilization every year. Uh, general stabilization is essentially our rainy day account. Um, it is our savings account for the town. So it is appropriate to put, um, as much as you can in that account. This year we're recommending, following the FinCom's plan of putting in ten percent or three hundred and seven thousand three twenty-one into general stabilization, which currently has a balance of just under one point four million dollars. A use of these funds, just as a side notation, does require two-thirds vote of town meeting. Um, it is important to keep a balance and stabilization that affects our bond rating, um, and when we go to borrow and things of that nature. So it is something that rating agencies and auditors and things of that look, like, things of that nature look at. And then I believe all we have left are the planning board articles. And see, do I have someone from planning board here who would like to speak to the planning board articles? Okay. Well, I could go through them quickly. Um, the first is just an amendment to the Berlin zoning district map. So it's removing. A list of parcels from the residential and agricultural district and adding them to the agricultural, recreation, conservation. District. So I won't read all of the parcels, but they are located on River Lyman, Pleasant, Crosby, Linden. Lancaster and Peach Hill Road. So it would remove those parcels. Of town-owned land um and place them in that agricultural, recreation, conservation district. And then there are two acceptance of private ways as public road requests. One is for Gibbs Road and the other is for Pollard Road. So this basically would turn these roads, which are currently private ways into public roads. They would become the responsibility. Of the town in terms of maintenance upkeep, et cetera.
Gibbs Road is, I mean, Pollard Road is right before the tracks at Five Corners, the new development that went in. If you're heading to Clinton, it's on the right before you go over the track. But what about Gibbs Road?
I looked that up at one point. Um, near Peach Hill, I believe. Uh. It's up in Peach Hill Estates. Right down the road from Shartner Farms. Give a shout out there. Um, and then last but not least is our um article for setting the twenty twenty-three annual town election. For the Monday following town meeting, which would be Monday, May eighth. Um, between the hours of twelve PM and eight PM here at the Berlin Town Offices on Linden Street. Down on the lower level.
And, and as I understand it, talking to the clerk, that uh the library trustee for three years and the trustee of trust for three years. There's actually not a formal candidate on the ballot. Um, and so if people are interested in running, I think I've already heard from one person, not tonight, who's, who I think is beginning to make words about running for. Uh, as a write-in for library, but uh that doesn't mean someone else can't. And also the trustee of trust could use someone as well.
I don't know if anyone had any questions, but that is our warrant.
Any other uh uh comments from the other select board members? Uh, anyone in the. Audience have any question about anything we discussed tonight or the process of it, or it, it doesn't even now have to even be on the, the agenda. If you have. Questions about things going on in town, uh, the select board is here to uh. Uh, answer questions as, as Peg appropriately pointed out, we're not allowed to debate things, but we can at least answer factual stuff. We want to know what is happening. X or Y or, or anything like that. Uh, we are, we are here uh to answer those. I don't know if Chris or Peggy have anything you want to say.
No, uh, looking forward to seeing everybody uh in a couple Mondays. Uh, it'd be nice to get together again. Inside Berlin Memorial, so we don't have to worry about the bugs. So we're good to go. Um, you know, come out, spread the word. Though uh it's, it's your town, so we only do what you uh want to. Oh, here comes Mary. Mary, I think it was Mary Porter. Maybe she's, she's unbooted.
All right, Mary, I'm gonna allow you to talk.
Oh, oh, okay. I can talk, but you're not gonna look at me, which is just fine. I haven't changed. It's the same. On the two, the two uh acceptance of a private way as a public road. Gibbs Road and Pollard Road. I don't know if anybody's here from planning board, but my question to planning board is why would we do that? As a town. A- a- and maybe that comes a bit from the finance committee too, because. I, you know, I know we have to get money to pave our roads, et cetera. So what, why would the town accept these? Offered roads.
If there's, is there anybody here to answer?
There's no one here from planning.
I'm, I'm guessing that the answer would be just because they pay taxes. And they'd like to have their road taken care of. And they made the request, but I, I'm sure a planning board member would be able to answer.
And, and I've been asked that question a couple of times. And so I'm hoping the planning board by. Time we get to town meeting, when this word, when this article is presented, will answer that question when they make their argument in favor of the warrant article. Because, Mary, that question has been asked to me of a couple of people. Uh, uh, and I don't have a good answer for it either.
I, I, I don't know really either road, but I think they're like cul-de-sac. So to me, it's a, it's an elongated driveway, but you know. Uh, so that's why I asked the question and I. Yeah. That's all.
Okay, so see, because I didn't show your face, now I can remove your permission to talk without kicking you out, I think. So please hold. There we go. That's the way to do it. My, running my first Zoom meeting, so no big deal. Oh, she's back.
I don't know if she, I don't think she put her hand down.
Oh, did you not, Mary? Did you have something else?
Wait a minute, I, I let me lower my hand. Sorry.
Oh, no problem. It's good practice. There we go. Okay.
But yes, uh, uh, if there are other things, um, uh, I want to, cause I was asked a couple of times even at the, the fishing derby. That we have, uh, tell, you'll have to correct your run. We have signed the contracts to uh, uh, upgrade the tennis courts and basketball courts and put in pickleball courts. And that the contractor is believing that they can have this done by the end of June. And so that uh, uh, even with some delays, we will probably have some summertime to enjoy those courts.
Yes, I, and I have um an e- even better news for you, if you will. Um, they have already started delivering uh equipment to the site, which is really exciting. Um, so they are going to be putting up barrels and caution tape. And if all goes well, weather-wise, and I literally just got this today at one fifty-eight this afternoon. They are trying to reclaim and grade the court on Monday.
Wow.
Yes.
Great.
So, um, they did give a schedule, um, but basically it would kick off on Monday with the goal. I'm just trying to find their email with the schedule. Up here we go. Uh, here's our schedule. So uh, the goal, oh gosh, this is so small. Let's see. Goal would be basically to. Have everything to, okay, so the court surfacing and the line striping are the last two steps that would take place. They're looking at the week of June nineteenth for that. So this will go on a bit. Um, but. June nineteenth is the slated date for the last steps of the project. So it's exciting. You'll see some things down there.
And a shout out to Rec and Lions and all the countless volunteers who uh I popped down at uh. The Easter egg hunt and the field was filled with kids, little and big. So it was very nice to see. And then. I know that the fishing derby was a great success. So to all those volunteers that stepped up and put in the extra work. You know, thanks for, thanks for keeping the fun back in Berlin. Appreciate it.
Do you have any pictures, Peg? Did you get any?
No, 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 they stuck me on the mic. You know, I, I walked up because I was passing out uh. Uh, the takeover uh for the Woo Sox in September and uh one of the gals I walked by, I said hello to. And she handed me the mic and said, here, you, you like to talk, so make all our announcements. And Eric was kind enough to pull up the uh, the cruiser for me. So I was actually in the front seat. Of the cruiser making the announcement. So uh, you know, thank you to Eric for uh doing that for me. I appreciate it.
See now, I, I go to the fishing derby and volunteer and I, I end up uh measuring fish for much of the afternoon. So.
Yeah, no, I was looking to steal candy from kids. So you know, it, uh, it was all good. So you know, nothing's changed. I bartered years ago with kids. For the candy. So you know, just keep it going.
Well, I'm sorry I couldn't make it. But I want, I did want to say um, thank you to Lisa Mayor for putting this in my door. I'm sure, I'm sure he wasn't the only one.
Right.
Um, Earth Day cleanup, just a reminder, it's nine to two on April twenty-second.
Which is this weekend. It's a Saturday.
I was just gonna give a, another thanks to Rec and also to Fred. Um, recreation brought it to our attention. There is a very splintered set of bleachers. Um, that have actually been removed by Fred and his crew from the field. So nobody gets a splinter. Um, stuck in like their leg. Uh, so those have been removed and uh highway will be breaking them down. And then we will be coming up with a disposal plan.
It's all kinds of fun things going on in our little town. So.
It's a busy little town. That's for sure.
That's right.
Well, with o- other questions or announcements, I, I thank everyone for attending the coffee talk tonight. Uh, it is very educational. Uh, uh, tell your friends to watch online, uh, so they can be more educated about what's going on. On May first, and hopefully we'll see all of you and more at the town meeting.